Are we ready to begin? Are you ready?
Yes.
You're going to go ahead and launch the meeting. It is six thirty-one. Call a meeting to order. I think we can check for form.
If I can. Chair Valdés.
There.
Vice Chair Corrigan.
Here.
Commissioner Ye.
Present.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Kautor.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Moore.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Wang has expressed that she will be absent. Commissioner Wang has expressed that she'll be absent. So we have a quorum of six.
Do you have a pledge? It is not three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to open it up to public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any cards?
No, one so far.
And what do we want the points that we can just say?
Oh, if we wanted to stand up to the public.
If you can't see them, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's my one over there. Any other public safety cards, please bring them here. Thank you.
Okay. We have two at this time. Chair Valdés, how long would you like to give each speaker?
Two.
We have two.
There's three.
We have three.
Three minutes each.
Okay.
Just one moment.
Because we don't have microphones for you, I would ask you, and it's only up there, I would ask you to overspeak and speak somewhat slowly so that the public, if there's anybody out there, but a lot of people watch the video, they can hear you. Sorry that we don't have microphones for you.
Yes, so our first speaker is Ben McCann.
If I may, I'll hand out some info sheets to commissioners. My name is Ben McCann. I'm a parent at the Tiny Talks preschool. The city runs three programs as part of the Tiny Talks program through Parks and Rec. It runs two preschools known as kinder prep and play school. And it also runs an after-school care program known as Lunch and Play. The city has put out RFP to privatize these programs. And, you know, that, my understanding is that that's a result of these programs not breaking even financially. Tuition has not been raised in over ten years. And so I think that there are other solutions instead of privatizing these programs. We adore the teachers, they're fantastic. We were at the school this year and last year. And we're, you know, going to attend the next two years if this program continues, we really love it. And we've toured all the private preschools that are out there. None are as good as the program that the city offers. And so, you know, the decision unfortunately, I think, is going to be made very quickly in terms of a recommendation to council. And so I don't think that this commission will have an opportunity to give feedback on that. But I'd like to ask all of you as private citizens who are, you know, very interested in the city and the Parks and Rec program, to please take a look, learn more. I've written my email address on the back. And there's also a URL at the bottom where you can learn more. Be happy to answer questions. Right now, we're just trying to get the word out to let people know that this is happening. You know, if there is a proposal made to council to privatize the program, you know, we're going to make our voices heard that we'd like this program to continue. Thank you.
Well, I have a clarifying question. If you would. You mentioned RFP. What is the state, do you know what the state of the RFP is?
Yeah, so the private providers have submitted RFPs. We don't know how many have been submitted, but the finalists will be chosen this week. I can provide more details. I've got the whole schedule, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Thank you, no, that's fine, thank you. Any other questions? So, when did you find out about the change?
Yeah, unfortunately, the parents were not officially notified until after the RFP was put out. So, you know, we've been playing catch-up here. Like, you know, I really think that there should have been some consultation with the parents, with this commission, with the teachers in terms of, you know, what we could do to the program. I think there's a long list of changes that we could do if we're concerned about the program's financials. For example, there's been zero marketing of the program. We got an article in the Los Altos Town Crier stating that the program was under consideration for cancellation. And four more families signed up for the program as a result of learning that the program had closed because they just didn't know it existed.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I have a question.
Have you reached out to the city council members?
We have.
Ben, I have a question. So, I just, for clarity's sake, so your major concern with privatizing that will close essentially will, right? Or what are your two major concerns?
Yeah, I think probably our biggest concern is just that we love the program the way it is now. If it is privatized, we're going to lose all of the teachers. They are not licensed to work at a private preschool. The way that the program is run right now, the teachers do not acquire licensing. And also, I think, just the way that the teachers have been treated throughout this process, I don't think that we would be able to retain them if this program is privatized. So that would be my number one concern. Secondarily, I think, you know, the program right now costs about $4,000 a year. That's roughly equivalent to the programs drawn by Cupertino, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale. The private programs, the providers, probably, I think, the two front-runners are Children's House and Children's Corner. I hope I got those right. There's a few preschools around here that start with childrens. I'm not going to confuse, but those programs cost about $15,000 a year. So it's about two and a half times the price. And, you know, it would be a very small and reasonable raise in tuition for the program to break even. It would be far, far cheaper than outsourcing to one of these private providers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maddy McBurnham.
On the agenda, this was the agenda item, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, I misread that. That's correct. It does say number three. I just shuffled them in because I got them all at the same time. And then the next one, oh, it would be on items not on the agenda from Mala.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Amal Khan. I am the founder of Mala, which was an agenda item in the mid-February meeting that you guys had. Mala stands for Muslims around Los Altos. There was a very long meeting where you all discussed why now, you know, and there was a lot of detail. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. I was actually in Mexico City listening to the call on Zoom. Really sad that I wasn't able to attend. But I did want to extend a personal invitation from Mala to all of the committee members here for our first annual iftar that we are self-funding. We did take it really hard, our organization, that the Parks and Rec Department would not help find us. But it is what it is. But we would love to offer an invitation to you all to attend, I am working with Manny on sending that invitation to all of you. Ifar will happen here in the Grounds of Oak Room on March 31st in the evening. And then we will, I will have Manny forward you all of the details of the event. One of the important questions that was raised, that was answered by Nadia, one of the speakers that was here, one of the committee members asked, why now? And as a Muslim myself, as a woman of color, my response to that is, why not now? This is a time where marginalized minorities are asking for help from the committee members. And I understand what the limitations were in what the committees, what they are and are not able to. Unfortunately, the meeting was, I mean, it was incredibly painful to watch, as you can imagine. But I do hope that by offering this invitation to you all, you are able to attend and to fully understand what an iftar is, which is in the month of Ramadan, you break the fast at sundown. So we wanted for you all to come and see what a cultural event it is. And so we are, personally, I wanted to offer that invitation, and I hope you all are able to make it. Yeah.
I wasn't here last month. What happened? Just quickly, just give me like a thirty second. I don't know what was painful.
So, so am I not allowed to answer that?
No, yeah, we're only allowed to ask you clarifying questions in terms of what you've said. And I understand that for the commissioner's viewpoint, it may be a clarifying question because he wasn't here. We can't re-litigate the meeting in the public comments portion, so I apologize for that. I want to make, I want to make a clarifying state, I want to ask you a clarifying question. When you said, why not, why? One of the questions you got from us was, why now? And you said, you know, you're telling us now, why not? Did you, did you understand? How did you take that question? Did you, did you believe we were saying, why do you want to do it now in terms of the month of the year? That it is Ramadan? Or did you take it as this year versus, say, next year, which would give us a longer ramp to be able to work with you?
Sure.
So was it the former that you interpreted? Because I could understand if I were in your shoes, that would be painful. But if you understood it from a logistical standpoint, perhaps you can understand where we were coming from. That's a very important distinction. I want to make sure you clarify that, that you understand that.
Yeah. I think it was actually a little bit of both. Our son attends Egan Middle School. So if I could just kind of speak to that. Our son attends Egan Middle School. There is an act of Islamicophobia that occurred, this just a couple of weeks ago. We met with the superintendent, we met with the principal. They handled it wonderfully, masterfully, really. And then the question arose is, what else can we do as parents to invite people to get to know us as Muslims better, us as Pakistani Americans a little bit better? So the question of why now? That's what, that's what that was. And I, again, I wasn't here at the meeting, but I was here to express that. So I did take that, why now, as both of those? Because one of the commissioners did say there have been other organizations that have been around longer, and it's taken some organizations five years to get something up and going.
No, it was about, it was about funding, not about getting going.
Please, no further discussion on that one.
So my last clarifying question is, has there been, your event is going to happen. So do you believe that any other barriers have been placed in your way of events?
Any other barriers, absolutely not. We have been working with Gabriel.
Make sure that.
So I'll go ahead and answer. Yeah, yeah, I actually really appreciate that question. No, we've been working with Gabriel and also with Manny, who have been phenomenal. And also, the mayor Weinberg has just issued a Ramadan proclamation that occurred last Tuesday, a week ago. So again, why now? The mayor has opened the door. He has made history in the city of Los Altos with his first ever Ramadan proclamation. So it's a moment for the Muslim community of Los Altos. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, if I may.
I, we did receive an invitation. It's not an actionable invitation.
It was, but I think it was addressed to me.
But the goal was in the, yeah, so I wanted to make.
I was trying to forward, I received several, so, yeah, let me just say, I received several invitations, one or two. One was the first one that came to me, the second one that came to me after we talked about inviting the commission. So I think there was a mix-up, and I sent the one that was sent to me. I didn't think it was addressed to me, but it was because I got a response a few hours ago today saying, oh, somebody, you responded, you're going now. And I can't make it that day, I'm out of town, so.
My Manny.
I'll work, I'll work it out.
Clarify that. And it would actually only work like that because the address was to your email address. I did ask Manny for the individual email addresses, and he said no. So what I will do then is, we will figure this out. We will, I can send you all of the details in an email.
There, there, there's a way I can blindly send something to them. And if they respond to you, that's different. So maybe the commissioners who are interested in going and getting an invitation for this, email Casey, and then she will send out the individual emails to the group, okay?
Send the link that we can click on.
They'll send them out directly, yes.
I'm good, okay, cool. Sorry I messed you up there, Manny.
No, 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 that was, that made me a little.
We don't want Manny to show up, so that's for the best.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No further public comments.
Are there any other, anything from the public? Then we'll move on. We're going to enter the items for consideration portion. First, the minutes. So apparently there was that.
The minutes be changed for the next.
The minutes that were published to the public record, to the packet, are erroneous beyond what we could amend here. So you are recommending that we continue their approval to the next meeting?
Yes, based on the fact that we updated the minutes that originally were written down. We did not post for your review, all the commissioners reviewed the proper ones. So I recommend, staff recommends that the commission, someone make a motion to continue the approval of the minutes to the next meeting.
So. I have a motion, second. Motion from Commissioner Thor, a second from Commissioner Morris. I'm starting to articulate those because as we were reviewing videos, we realized we could not hear who was making motions and who was making friendly amendments and things. So I'm going to start to make that a performative part of the meeting. Any discussion? Yes.
Are we still using subcommittee as the term?
No. Ad-hoc committee.
Because it says on the thing.
Yeah. There were.
Minutes right now, though, so.
It's in the minutes, we need to adjust that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll fix that.
That can be, that can be adjusted.
Okay, so we're going to delay the.
Actually, can I? Yeah, can I have a vote for that? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. If that passes unanimously.
Moving on to the museum land acknowledgement. Yeah, good. Would you like to be your president?
Since I wrote this down, we are, the museum, the Los Altos History Museum, reached out to us and represented today, I believe, by Elizabeth, anyone else? Okay. And she will be here from, when she introduces herself, she'll be here to present, do a presentation for this museum and discuss and acknowledge land acknowledgement that is part of the process of reconciliation with Native American tribes in the United States. So, and she can tell us more in her presentation. So please, come on up or come to the table.
What would you prefer?
Either one works, can we throw the?
I did provide a couple of slides.
Okay, great.
So, thank you so much, commissioners, madam chair, staff. Thank you for having me here this evening, I appreciate it. I'm Dr. Elizabeth Ward. I'm the executive director of the Los Altos History Museum, right across the way over there. And I, do I need to stand?
Can see me too?
No, 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 thank you.
So, as a little bit of background on myself, just sort of briefly, my, my, my master's degree is in anthropology. And I'm sure many of you are aware that the United States has a colonial history related to the many, many, many Native American peoples and tribes all over this country. When I was working at the Smithsonian Institution, we were working with the Alaskan Native groups. And there's all sorts of very heartbreaking experiences of Native peoples. And in Alaska, at the Arctic Studies Center where I was working, we were working on repatriation, both in the physical sense of bodies that need to be reburied, artifacts that need to be returned, but also in terms of cultural knowledge that needs to be respected, and it needs to go both ways. So for at least, I would say thirty years, if not longer, the museum field has been thinking a lot about how do you relate to the Native peoples of this country? It started out, the museum profession started out as a colonial enterprise of actually going in and breaking into graves and taking artifacts. And if you think about Egyptian tomb raiding and all of that. So there's been a lot of work on the museum field to try to sort of overcome that and to try to do some process of healing. So one, one technique that's come about that not just museums do, but museums were at the forefront of it, of doing a verbal land acknowledgement. And I'm sure many of you have been at events that start this way, that say, we want to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral homeland of the Moakma Alone, for instance, here. And, and recognize the tribal names and the tribal affiliations, and might even say something in the tribal language to be able to articulate that this is a homeland that was unceded territory in some cases, right? Taken without any due process or without any legal methods. So that's, that's a verbal statement that gets made very often in front of programs. And it does usually, you know, as I mentioned here, it's part of a long-term, that they, indigenous people had a long-term legitimate and important right to land. So it's a, it's a matter of respect and being respectful to the ancestors that were here before us. It, that they lost access to their land in a process that was not fair and equitable. That's part of what makes a land acknowledgement meaningful, is that you actually acknowledge that the land was taken usually without. And even if you were paid a couple of shells for Manhattan, that's not necessarily considered like a fully, fully equitable process. And, and it usually has, it's really, really important that there be points about their continued presence in the land. So this is not said in the past tense. There are still Alone in this area. There are still indigenous people in, in the San Francisco Bay area. And it's, of course, a very small population, but it is important to recognize that, that they are, that, that it's part of our culture today. So the Los Altos History Museum's process with this has been to engage with the tribal archaeologists for the Moakma Alone. The Moakma Alone are not the only group in the Bay Area that is in a position to represent the Native peoples of the Bay Area. There is the Ramatash up in San Mateo County. There is actually another organization called the Thamiyan. Is the, I was trying to remember if they say Tomian or Thamiyan, but I think they say Thamiyan. Thamiyan is the, is the indigenous word for Santa Clara County, basically. And so there is also a Thamiyan tribe in, in Santa Clara area. And the Moakma Alone with whom we have been working, they are in the process of trying to get tribal recognition. They do not have tribal recognition right now, although they just recently had Anna Schu help them get some progress made in DC. So, but the Moakma Alone are not the only group that one could work with. It's just the group the museum has been working with. They have a tribal archaeologist that we've been working with. He has served on the museum's diversity advisory group for more than three years. He's given two presentations about the Alone history in the area. And he has provided the museum with a written land acknowledgement that is sort of two pages long, and we usually abbreviate that when we do our programs. So, so what we would like to do in the civic center is we would like to augment the verbal acknowledgement that we give before our programs with something that's always physically available to the public to view. This would require a long process. So what I wanted to do tonight was to just sort of see, get, get a sense of the room of how interested this would be for the city of Los Altos to do. As you know, the Los Altos History Museum is on public property. We have a contract with the city to run the museum on the city's behalf, but it is city property. So I wouldn't want to do anything, especially this public. We are proposing, I think you're probably familiar with the J. Gilbert Smith House. Basically, the library is here, we, we are down here. This is the J. Gilbert Smith House, and then, you know, the police department. So this is a triangular area that is right where the library parking lot, and then the Bus Barn Theater would be over here, right? So this is that sort of driveway right there. And there's the new walkway that they put in, the nice walkway with the pergolas right there between the library and the museum and the civic center. So this is becoming a more major walkway until there is a bridge over San Antonio. It might not be a super major walkway, but it is still designed to be sort of a central axis for the civic center in my understanding of what the designers were trying to do when they built this building. So this would be quite centrally placed. It is right near the J. Gilbert Smith House, which from our point of view is interesting. J. Gilbert Smith being a Scottish immigrant to this area, and he built orchards. It's a nice story, it's a really good story, but I like the corrective of having the Alone land acknowledgement near it as well. Seems like a nice way to open up that conversation and broaden it. And we plan on planting native plants in this area. So it would also be appropriate in that sense. We're planting native plants here regardless of whether or not we have a land acknowledgement here. But it would be in the context of a space with a native oak, a native manzanita tree, and some other low-water native plants that we're, we're putting in that new area. So, but it's a really, it's a public space. It's a public space, and I just wanted to sort of see what you would think of a plaque, for instance, or we could try to get an artist. I've asked the Alone if they have any artists that we could work with. They don't have that many artists in their, it's a very small group. It's like forty people, right? And so I would probably be opening up the call for art much wider than that. And I don't, I cannot promise the commissioners that the artists themselves would be an indigenous person. So it's, it's just a, it's a process and a question of, what are we really trying to get at with this? Do we want it to be educational? We want people to just understand? It could be very simple. This land used to be called Thamiyan. We thank our Alone predecessors for the care they gave and the stewardship they continue to provide. Like, it could be a very short plaque. It could be a really inspirational art piece. And it really has a range of things it could be, or it could just be some native plants and some boulders and nothing written. But I wanted to at least express my opinion that this is a nice opportunity to do something that would be available 24/7 to the public as they're walking past to get full knowledge of who the indigenous people were that lived in this area. So I'm just, I'm asking for some feedback tonight on, on, from that range, what would feel appropriate to you all.
Clarifying question when you're ready.
Okay, go back there.
While we're asking questions, so that the way the microphone can hear you.
When the discussion begins, then she's.
I wanted to make sure, we introduced this as a concept presentation. There is no decision to be made. It is, but it's not formally a discussion item. Can we consider it?
It is formally a discussion item.
Okay.
It's not an action item, right?
No, it isn't.
You can action on things too. But the request is that it's discussed here, and she just.
We're going to break this up into two sections. Let's, let's break it up. The first section will be clarifying questions on the presentation and what the director said. And then, once we get all our clarifying questions answered, then we'll move into a formal discussion, okay? Commissioner Ye.
Yeah, on the, on the map, it was 1A scale, but I see no measurements in it, so help me.
I didn't see any. Okay, so, do you want?
Yeah, I just want to see, like, the one measurement I saw made no sense. So that's why I want to.
The drawing was drawn by Tyler Ferucci, and it is 1A. So, yeah, so I.
Well, just give me an idea how big this is.
This is thousand square feet, twelve thousand, three.
Oh, no, 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 it's, no. It's, it's not any bigger than this table area here.
Yeah, it's small.
This is, this is. This is, this is maybe.
That was thirty-six feet by forty, like sixty inches.
So that's the size of the oak tree, the oak tree that we got from, that we, the city just helped us plant. The oak tree is in what's called a sixty inch box, which is sort of its exterior. So that's in the middle here. Yeah, this is maybe, I would say fifteen feet by probably maybe forty feet.
It's twenty by forty, but it's probably closer fifteen by thirty.
It's an extent, it's an extent place that you can literally walk to. It's where the old oak tree was that the city recently tore down right immediately south of the Gilbert Jason House.
For a little bit of scale, this is a sidewalk right here. So this is basically, this is maybe what this is. Yes, 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 yes.
A little bit wider, but yes, that's about right.
And the oak that you just planted is a valley oak, I understand?
Yes.
Was donated?
Donated by Google, Google. The city helped us plant it. So that was very helpful and Rotary helped fund that, yes.
Okay, so just to clarify, you already have plans implemented to install the native plants, correct? Okay, so that's a done deal. So basically what you're asking is if we can work on a plaque or piece of art together, is that right?
That is correct. Yes.
And have you explored artists yet?
I have not submitted a call for art. I did not want to do so and then say, oh, sorry, the city won't let us do it. So I, I'm kind of preemptively asking if there's enough support to do a call for art and then the plan would be to come back with, if, if you agree and you're interested, I could come back with three or four, we could do a subcommittee of, of people who want to work on this, like we could then do a call for art. But I, I didn't want to preemptively assume that people would want us to do this.
Okay, and then other than to get Tyler to read this draft.
And then would, do you think that it would be a good or plausible idea to have the artists work in collaboration with Alone tribe members so that they could, he or she could create something that is meaningful and impactful and accurate, you know?
Thank you so much with a beautiful question. Thank you. Absolutely. And I do already have, we have worked with the tribal leadership of the Moakmalone on several occasions. The museum has a good relationship with them. They came to our opening, gave a land acknowledgement. And, and absolutely would be part of the process would be allowed. So I would imagine we do the call for art, we get maybe, I don't know, ten, twenty submissions. It would be the Moakmalone who then might narrow that down at for your consideration. I would imagine a process like that, absolutely. I just can't guarantee that the artists themselves would be of, of native heritage per se.
Are you asking for financial support?
Well, you know, it depends on the scope of the project and how expensive it is and, and I, I don't know yet. I would imagine that might be part of the ask.
Does the history museum have a budget?
The history museum has not put this project into our budget yet. Our new fiscal year starts July first. So we have not put this into our budget yet. We are already doing the landscaping with museum funds and with museum financing.
Thank you.
Have you presented this to the city council yet?
No, no, I didn't know the right way to do it. I thought starting here was.
I only ask that because sometimes the city council doesn't approve what we have. So that's why I'm asking.
That's okay. We still want to come up with the advisory and then they could choose to or not.
That's a good point though.
Don't start there because you want to start here and then. Question, is there something preventing you from widening the, the net so that you can assure some indigenous artists that, that the local tribe would approve?
It's a good question too, that you, that process usually, and I think Maddie's here and she could explain, you know, and sometimes that would be, you then need to really think about how you want to define it and and definitely the Moakmalone have a good relationship with, for instance, tribes that are south of San Jose or the Miwok that are in the North County. So if you really want to say it needs to be an indigenous artist, you can't say it needs to be a native Alone indigenous artist because that's where it starts to get, in my opinion, you'd be really limiting. So, but if you want to say it needs to be indigenous, then we could say California native and, and sort of work that way. Bay area native perhaps, right? Or, and then honestly, a lot of Hispanic culture can also be included in, in that terminology.
Just talked about where I was thinking, I'm thinking of heading is that there are so many, it seems to me that there, the question is, a lot of our ethnicities are defined by colonial lines that have been drawn in the sand. So given that, I just wanted to understand what you perceive as some of those lines that you do not want to cross over. So that we understand what the scope of, of our position can take. We don't want to be obstructive, but at the same time, we also, I would hope, you know, want to support this in a very authentic way.
In the call for arts that is currently done, I'm, I'm not sure what the, you know, what the process is or what, how you, how you're able to, to make any, maybe try to be gender equitable in terms of male or female artists that are represented. I, I don't know what your current process is, but if there's anything like that, I, I definitely would prefer the art. If it's an art or just talking about a plaque with some words on it, like an informational plaque, I, I think that could get made by just about anyone, as long as the Moakmalone tribe leadership is working with me on the wording. I don't, I don't think it matters who makes the plaque per se, but if we're really looking at an art piece, then I would be much more interested in, in that sort of, you know, trying to make it authentic.
To your point about the, the diversity, equity, inclusion aspects, we have that as an explicit part of our work plan such that it kind of informs everything that we do. And then I know that in the arts commission that preceded this, this commission, they had also discretion, discretionary criteria that where they tried to, to be diverse in their selection of art. So I think that lineage continues. I don't think you need to worry about that. Do you have a timeline thinking of for this?
The, the momentum is, is now on the, in terms of the planting and we would expect to start getting the, the hardscape as well, the bricks and the boulders put in, in the next maybe six months. So I would at least like to get the call for art underway, you know, in, in this calendar year. And I think it can come in later, the art piece itself. I, I think it's okay if it comes in later. But I, I do think that, you know, while, while this, while the tree is still small and it's easier to put the piece in, you know, I think that, that, yeah. I would like to do it this calendar year if possible.
Have, have you considered the scope of this project to be, what I'm hearing you say is it's a, something to see, something to read, maybe something to touch, you know, plants or boulders. Have you considered it a place to actually sit and reside and like maybe a mini pocket park? That kind of a function where people would not just be at the perimeter, but go in? Or is that not part of your vision?
So as, as Manny knows, and thank you for that question, the oak tree that had been there had a sort of circular bench around it and it was a very popular place for people to sit. It was, my understanding, it was one of the reasons why that was such a hazard was to be encouraging people to sit under an oak tree. I don't think this type of oak is as prone to dropping branches as the one we had.
And the usage has changed. So I, I need to open to almost anything, either just accident or, Tyler on the stop on the ground too close to trees. Shift to the next year.
Exactly. In terms of something that encircles the trunk, you don't want to be, you don't want to be within, you know, ten feet of.
I do think, I mean Tyler's, Tyler's plan here, I'm sorry, sorry. Tyler's plan here was for flat boulders that anyone certainly could sit on, but not as directly like a bench. It was more like boulders that, yes, that, that was or more organic, but it could, it's a flat boulder and it wouldn't be like this. It would be a bench height, flat boulder. So one certainly could sit on it and we could do more, right? That might be even part of the artist's idea, sort of what would the boulders look like and how might they be arranged? That could be part of what we, because that's not figured out yet. It's the planting that are done yet, not the hardscaping per se. Thank you.
So are you interested in a plaque and a piece of art or one or the other or both together? Just so I understand.
You know, that's, that's really why I wanted your feedback. I don't know what feels right for the city of Los Altos and I don't know how ambitious of an artwork, because then the budget goes up, right? So I, I think that, you know, personally, I love when word art happens together. Like there, there's some amazing pieces in, in, and even in Mountain View, you know, where just the names and the words and it is art and word together. So I think there's so many inspirational ways it could be done. But the, yeah, you want it to be, but that gets just more and more expensive, right? So it.
Do you have funding at any, and I know you mentioned something. Do you have any funding security?
I have designate, I've received designated gifts for this sort of area as a whole. But nothing specifically designated for the Alone land acknowledgement art piece. And I do think however, thankfully, we were thinking we would have to sell bricks here to help pay for the planting. And now I'm really hoping that's not the case because I think if I had name bricks here of our donors, it wouldn't go very well with the, with the land acknowledgement. So I'm grateful for a couple of, of large gifts we got recently to be able to pay for the planting without selling any name bricks here. And so it, it would be, but we do have a couple of people we need to acknowledge for the tree and for the irrigation that went in here. So I do have a couple of people I have to thank for, for what we have so far. I do not have any funding designated for this, because I don't know what the scope of it is yet.
So you feel that, that community contribution is detracting from the land acknowledgement aspect? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I guess it depends on the price of the bricks and the, the type of bricks, right? But yeah, I think if it's major donors, it's not quite right. But if it was like a lot of names, that would be nice. There is definitely talk amongst the board of like just a sort of wall of a lot of people's names or like this handprints from the kids. There's a lot of ways for it to feel like community, but I don't know that community and Alone land acknowledgement, I think those are a little bit, you know what I'm saying? Yes.
Claiming ownership.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's kind of exactly why I wanted to come to talk to you guys about, I, I, if we're going to do a land acknowledgement, it needs to be a somewhat sacred space.
And so if it is, then can, will there be any? I have my own issues with land acknowledgements. I believe they're performative. And so putting a piece of art, to me is still performative. Not that I'm against it.
Right.
I'm just saying, is there any way we can go further in terms of, you know, involving the, the the local tribe or tribes on a more ongoing basis? I want to say perpetual basis, but I know that gets it to all kinds of legal mess. My question is, you know, there, I want them, I, I have this vision where I believe that they should leave their mark. This was theirs. We took it away. A piece of art is not giving it back to them, but maybe them having a stamp on it that is longstanding, whether it's stewardship for it. They care for it. They have representatives that care for it. They get their names on it. They get to put their names on it. They don't have to donate a cent. We pay for that. You know, so such that it is a, a real vital type of arrangement. I, I, I wanted to see if that's any part of your thinking.
Well, I, I think that's, thank you. That's inspirational. Like Stanford has a native garden that is, different native groups have, have that level of tending to, to different garden spaces. Certainly if we decided not to do this, there's nothing precluding your commission from deciding to do a native Alone walkway here around the community center. I mean, there's so many ways that a land acknowledgement could be done. And I do agree, this is just a small bounded space, but it's a space right in front of the history museum. So for history, for history museums, it's awkward to not have something at the entrance to the museum. So to, to me, this, this would be helping the museum to be able to, to, and I don't think it would preclude and it shouldn't be the end of an effort. It should be sort of the beginning of an effort. And I think there's a lot more that could be done. But this was simply at what is basically a major, it's one of the two major entrances to the museum and it would just be something at, so it would be, it would be helpful to the museum's rhetoric to at least do the performative, right? That we acknowledge that land and then I do think there's a lot more that could be done. So yeah, thank you for that.
Who, whose land is this?
Well, it's civic center property. It's definitely city of Los Altos land. It is city of Los Altos land. The museum sort of footprint area, there was a one point three acres, I think, that J Gilbert Smith, when he was alive and then his wife lived another decade after he did, they had sort of tenant rights for one point three acres in the middle of the civic center. So that kind of has become the museum property footprint because it, so it, because it just didn't get developed at the same time that the rest of the civic center did. But, but J Gilbert Smith gave all of his land to the city. So it is all city property. It's just sort of the museum tends to.
It is within the footprint of the museum property, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, yes. But it's still def, it's all, it's all, it's all city property.
So who's the decision maker on what happens on this land?
I think you guys.
We're the star.
You're a star. The museum has had, I mean, the city has, has a contract with the city, with the museum for the programming inside the building and even for the rights to like rent out the space outside of the museum for the garden.
The train station?
The train, yeah. So we have, the city has given us quite a bit of autonomy. I, I don't think I would have gotten in a lot of trouble if I just went and did this by myself, but I didn't want to.
Yeah, that's why, that's my question is why don't you just do it?
Right, 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 right.
Because you, I mean, you, you can repaint your walls of your museum, right?
Um, we can't paint the exterior.
No, the interior.
The interior.
I mean, that's kind of going into the details, but yeah, we, we work together to make sure that what's needed there is.
Can I ask you a good language? So our goal right now is, are we giving like a, like a stamp of approval for this? Are we just discussing it?
Just discussing the ideas that she put forward.
Are we, are we down with clarifying questions? Okay, thank you.
So, so as this item came to staff, I, I believe now it's just a discussion of possible ideas. We are recording this meeting. We can write down some of the things, the ideas that come and then we can share that with the museum. And then in a later date, if the museum decides, okay, this is our plan and they say it's going to cost us this much money, we'll try to get donors. Is there some kind of art funding that could go into the art piece of that land? So I think that's where, that's where we'll come down the road, but none of that had been discussed today. It's just ideas for this. Do we like this? We, being you, the commission, do you like it? And then any other ideas? And I think the Elizabeth will take those ideas back as well. So I think that's the extent of what was intended for this, okay?
So the process I'd like to use is that we'll just go around the table where each of you will just fill and tell us what you think, what you suggest, what you like, what you don't like. And then once everybody's had a chance, we can come back and, and have more open discussion. Is that okay? All right, we'll start at the end there.
Yeah, I'm indifferent to this. I mean, this is like her, her, she runs this, whatever she wants to do.
All right. Did that conclude your comment?
Yeah.
So it's not on our work plan, which I'm very concerned about because we have a lot of other projects that we haven't even touched. And this is going to be in and of itself, it sounds like a big project. It's also not part of our mission. We're not supposed to be here to engage in supporting performative works of art or whatever it is you want to call it. I also think that the commission members were expected to exercise judgment, formulating recommendations to the city council. And no offense to the, to the museum, but that presentation didn't include any details. Doesn't, I, I still don't know what they're asking for feedback on. It sounds like what they are looking for is funding, which I think would not be appropriate for us to support. I'm also a little bit concerned about the way that this is being presented to us, which is in the agenda report, it says that this project would recognize that indigenous people have had long-term legitimate and important rights to land and that the process by which the land, the city got the land was not fair and equitable. Is that going to go in a plaque? I mean, I think our residents would not be happy about that. I'm also concerned about the phrasing of. I'm also concerned about the phrasing of important rights on land, because if, is that gonna potentially trigger some sort of legal issue where we're gonna be talking about land restitution? Um, I just think that this is way beyond our scope. We don't have the time for it. We should be focusing on the projects that are in our work plan and not taking on any project like this. If, if the city, if the museum didn't want to include it in their own budget, I don't think that we should devote our time and resources to it.
Wait, say that last part again?
If, if the museum did not wanna put this in their budget, I don't think that we should devote our time and resources or budget to it, not at least this year. That's all, that's all I can say.
Commissioner Morris?
So, um, until recently, I, I understood that I was part Iroquois. So I have a, a history with being Native American. And I grew up with, um, a huge connection to the Native American people in Minnesota and a lot of Sioux and Chippewa. And so my heart is strongly towards, um, doing what's right for Native communities. I'm, I feel that some of this is sort of, I hate to use the word, but, uh, anyway, I feel like it's sort of lip service in some ways to the tribes. But if it's something that we can do to move, um, the conversation forward, I'm all for it. Um, I think it's important to educate, uh, our, our children in particular about what, how our country has been founded and how our country has grown. Um, and who has been, who's back it's been on, who's backs love people. And, um, so I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I'm not sure how, um, I feel about the funding coming from Park and Rec or from the Art Commission. I, I'd have to understand that a little bit more before I could weigh in on that. I, if this were to be done by the museum with or without us, I would hope that it would be an area that would have, um, definitely a contemplative, um, uh, tone to it where people would be able to sit. My heart broke when the tree was taken down, so I'm hoping that we can create an area that is has that same depth to it. I do understand that somewhere out there, there are ashes or perhaps a body buried. So I think we have to look into that as we start digging up more of our land where these oak trees are. So, um, I'd like that to be known that, that there is definitely, um, some part of the Smith family underground out there in some form. Um, so I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I wish we would do more. Um, I do know that we did a land acknowledgement when the, uh, community center opened. So I would hope that we wouldn't do just that again, that there'd be a little bit more. I'd like to see it really, um, geared towards children and education. And if, uh, if sculpture is brought into it, um, that the sculpture absolutely be done by only by a Native, um, American, because that's the right thing to do. That money needs to, whatever money is spent, needs to go to the pockets of the people who have been, uh, marginalized for all these years. That's my opinion on it, and, um, I support it being discussed more and looked at and if city council, you know, if they're the next step, I would go on record saying I support the museum doing that.
You made the comment about ashes. Do you have a source?
Um, there was an article about it in the town prior a number of years ago, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kotor?
I concur with Commissioner Corrigan on her statement. I also, uh, feel bad for the oak tree. I also feel bad for every person that's been marginalized, but I'm not sure, uh, if I had a plaque, I would feel whole. Uh, I don't even know if I got a sculpture, I'd feel whole. Uh, I'd love to talk about this more, but it's not on our work plan, so I don't know how to continue forward.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
Um, okay, so I too am a little curious why the history museum didn't budget for such a project, because I do think it's important. Um, and I also agree that it's important to stick to the work plan. I think lately some, um, some things have been introduced to us that aren't in line with what we're trying to accomplish. Um, and I do wanna try to stay on task because we have a lot to, to get done. Um, I respectfully disagree that art is performative. I think that it is provocative and engages in conversation. I think that it can pay homage to people. Um, I also think that it's an expression that transcends words. Um, I feel very strongly about that. I come from the Art Commission, so I might have a different perspective on art than others who came from Park and Rec. Um, I do, I love the idea, and I think that it is, um, again, important and impactful. And, um, I don't know where we, I don't know how we can help at this time, but I would like to see it move forward personally.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick, uh, question before we move on. The, the entirety of this, uh, top-down drawing, you're just, you, you can make that decision on your own other than what you've spoken about today, is that correct?
For the plants?
Yeah, like for the plants, like why, if you can do the plants, why don't you just do this instead?
I think because to the commissioner's point there, there is definitely some sensitivity to a land acknowledgement. A land acknowledgement is a, is a, is a, uh, a more political statement than plants are. So I, I, I don't wanna put the museum in a position of being way ahead of the City of Los Altos. If, if it's on public land, and I, I think it needs to be, and I'm not even asking for money per se from you guys, but it, it has to be politically supported by the city before I would feel comfortable doing it, because it, it is making a statement on behalf of the City of Los Altos.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna clear my comments, if I may.
Can I just acknowledge what, um, Dr. Ward just said? Or do you want me to wait for you?
No, you can.
I really appreciate what you just said, because it is political in nature. Now, our, our public art guidelines say we are not supposed to endorse political or religious art. So I, I don't know if you were aware of that, but I pointed that out. Thank you, Chair Valdez.
Okay. Here are my comments. Um, I, I don't agree that it's not in our work plan, and let me tell you why. So that's my first point. I believe it is in our work plan for the following reasons. We have a mission, and it's in our work plan to develop parks and to develop parkland. And we know that in Los Altos, sometimes a park is a tiny little corner, because we're landlocked and we don't have a lot of open land, and we're not in the acquisitive mode right now to annex more county land and do other things that we could as a city if we could afford it or had the motivation to do, to increase park space in an organic way. So we have to create it in an infill way and sometimes in an artificial way. So I see this space, it's big enough to be considered a place to go and enjoy its nature, which to me means park. We may not be able to put parking, uh, place structures on it and pathways through it, and, but it is a large enough space that we can consider it underneath that, that, um, mantra, if you will. The other thing that we have in our work plan is, is this underlying and overarching goal to advance DEI initiatives, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And just like we, you know, we did not reject Ramadan because we are rejecting that culture. We rejected the funding and partnership for Ramadan because we felt it was too religious and there wasn't enough time, et cetera, et cetera. There were some really hardcore reasons why we, we didn't that, we didn't, we weren't in any way saying that we don't wanna have something Ramadan-related in the future. We need time to figure that out. So I see land acknowledgements, and I see, um, the embracing of cultures that are here now, that are gonna be here in the future, and that have been here in the past, as very squarely within that scope. Um, it's one way to increase the connection that we have to the extant Indigenous communities in the area. And it's a way for them to then re, also reconnect to the land and to this community. I don't know how many of you know any Moekma Alone people here, but they are here and we should know them. So I think this is a great way to be there. Moreover, in our work plan, in several areas, we are still the bastion in this city for public, the public display of art, of public art on public land. This is public land. It is under the disposition of the museum, but it is still public land. There's going to be art on there. I love what you said, Commissioner Moore, about art. When I said the performative part, it's only because I think of land acknowledgement. I am of that persuasion that I believe that some Native Americans should get their land back, okay? But that doesn't mean I don't believe that art speaks much more than the physical aspect of art. It is everything, and it should be everywhere, and it can take many forms. Sometimes it can be political, sometimes it can be religious. But just like everything else we try to do, we can try to make it approachable, reasonable, and beautiful, and meaningful. So, uh, and then stay away from those other areas. But at some point, we do have to acknowledge our history, and it doesn't mean that we are bad people. It just means that we acknowledge our history and that there were some wrongs done in the past, and we're doing our best to try to, um, create connection again where, where, um, difference and fear and separation were the result. And then finally, with regard to our budget, um, in terms of the ask, at this point, the museum has not asked us for any money. So I don't think we should use that as a hurdle. But to the extent that we wanna be involved in that process, say to make the art more broadly appealing, you know, to ensure that Native Americans are involved, because I know, I don't know how all of you feel, but I believe that they should be directly. Uh, and we should cast a wider net with the approval of a local tribe to try to make sure that it's created, uh, by, um, Indigenous peoples. And if that, if we wanna exert that kind of, make our advice executable and they have to listen, well, maybe that means we have to help with money, because that's how we do it, right? We help sponsor things where we wanna have a say. So if we wanna have a say, then this is a way to do that. Um, whether your goals are to be as little, as little political or as little offensive to current peoples here or as mobilizing and informative, and I'll use your words, literally, you said mobilizing community. The only way we can have that influence is if we help them make this happen. So, um, I don't see it at odds with our work plan. Um, we may not have said item, you know, help museum make a land acknowledgement and plant plantings around a new tree on, on, on public land. We weren't that specific in our work plan, um, for the most part. But I just think there are at least three areas, generating the parks, DEI art. And we haven't hit the budget part yet, that, that puts it in the scope of our work plan. Um, I don't think we're being asked to do much labor-wise. So I think that the museum, you know, that's kind of in our bulk, on our bulk court. If, if we're, if we're spending most of our time on some other task, you know, I'm sure that the museum will, um, you know, will really give as much bandwidth as we're able. And I don't, I don't see it as a, we're not being asked to execute this project for the museum. It'd be different if the museum was coming to say, we expect the city to develop this land because it's your land and we want it to be this design, and we're asking you to fund it, and we'd like it to happen in a year. Um, they're not asking that. So I, I think that it's not a huge ask of our labor, um, but I think it can be very important. Uh, I think that if this is something the museum have the authority, as Commissioner Yeh has said, it's their land, they can do what they want with it. Uh, the city has granted them autonomy. Um, personally, I think the parks should wanna have their hands on it a little bit so that we can help influence it to happen, but also to, um, you know, to get our thoughts manifested in that project.
Okay, Chair Valdez. But, um, if, and, and as Mr. Commissioner Yeh has said, if, if they wanna do this on their own, great, they can do it on their own. But we do have guidelines that were approved by the city council, and it specifically calls out the ineligible works of art in food, political, religious statements. And it sounds like when what Dr. Ward said is that this is political. And, and she was rightfully, I mean, I, I appreciate her candor, because it seems to me that this is something that really should go to the city council, not for us. Um, I mean, we, we have to follow our own guidelines. And I know that, you know, we are now two commissions that got merged, but if this came to the Public Arts Commission, we couldn't have taken it on. We're now merged, and so I think these guidelines apply to the entire commission now. So I think if we're gonna carry out our responsibility as responsible advisors to the city council, we should say, city council, take this, because based on what has been presented to us, it violates these guidelines. And in addition, I still feel like there's not enough detail. I mean, I, I.
We're not, we're not close to any decision point here.
No, no, no. There's not enough detail for me to, to, to give a position other than I can't support this. And the feedback that they're looking for is, I think, the feedback that they're hearing, at least from all of us, so.
So I was on the, uh, the Arts Commission, so maybe you guys could help me out. What are these guidelines you're talking about? The, the can't be political, can't be religious?
On the website, they apply to our commission because they exist.
Isn't everything just gonna look like that then? You know, like, well, I don't understand. In the commission.
The City of Los Altos guidelines for public art, and it's a guide for what we're supposed to live by for the art commission.
But something that's political, I mean, my understanding when something is political and an agency can't be political, they mean they can't endorse any particular.
I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't.
You know, refer to history in truthful terms and all that political.
But I don't get it. There's a tree that fell down. Couldn't that be some environmentalist photo then? That's saying, hey, we're just.
Also, please, yeah, please, um. I, I, since there's not a decision to be made, I don't think we have to define what's political and what's not right now. Um, but that could be interpreted in different ways. So I think what the presentation brought forward was it can, the decision to make a land acknowledgement can become political. Doesn't mean it's political by the definition that you're reading out of there, but I'm not gonna make that statement.
Yeah, we're not, we're reading the words.
Yeah.
We haven't seen the words.
So I don't think it is addressing what was presented to it.
Can you help me out with something from a protocol-wise, uh, uh, perspective? When we wanna add something to the work plan, we can just do that, correct? And then city council approves it, and we can do that, that rolling, or is it only once a year?
It's usually once a year that we do that. There can be updates made, but it's gonna have to be, something's gonna have to fall off. So we can talk about the work plan, uh, as a, in, in general, when we do updates to it, and we may see that on the agenda in the future. But as of now, the work plan was just approved two months ago.
Yeah, yeah, it was recent.
Through the, through the deliberative process of, through the legislative process of the park, we can always make decisions to not do something. Of course, we have to get approval.
Well, I know. Good. I remember when I was the chair, we just used to add stuff.
And, 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 and I understand that, and, but, uh, but what I, what I will say is there will be things that come to you that aren't specifically on the work plan. Okay? There will be things that staff puts forward, there'll be asks.
Yeah, of course, and it's like the dog part.
And the, the fact that this commission will weigh the effort that they will have to put into that decision is important. So something that's asked, or do you support this using your logo on something? You can say yes, and there's no effort. It doesn't have to be on the work plan. That's just an example.
So, so I, I wanna push back a little bit, because I don't wanna use the DEI or the Star Wars thing on, on our work plan as. About, as a catch-all for whenever someone wants to grandstand or something like that, because that'll just, anything could fit in that.
I agree.
Okay, so, and I, that's why I didn't understand why it was in there in the first place, other than acting as a catch-all.
Okay, so staying on this subject, we'll, but move on, Chair, if you may.
Yes.
You have a question for Snap?
Yeah, okay.
So that area that, um, we're talking about, can it be, so the museum's in charge of it? Is that right?
It's city, okay, it, it's.
We own it. The city owns it. It belongs to the city, but are they kind of the managers of the space?
Yes.
Okay.
That's really how it's put. So, so, right, the city owns the land. Any major decisions, such as doing something like this or changing artwork or something like that, they are gonna come and refer to the city for that area. But as of, with the way it properly or recently was with the tree there, it was landscaping. They can pretty much do any landscape that they want. They, most of, ninety-nine percent of the time, they tell us what they're gonna do, and we're like, yeah, that's it, maintaining it.
It's like when you rent.
If they were to cement that whole thing over, they would need to talk to us.
Okay.
That's just an example.
So that was one thing that I wondered is that, so can that actually? So that was one thing that I wondered is that, so can that actually be transformed into park space of some sort so that we could actually put it on a park inventory?
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, could, could we look into that? You have to see if it's something that's
I gotta speak to that.
If I could say that, that's not Not what the Public Arts Commission would have done.
No, and I think that's the thing is that what we have this new commission, we're combining things. And I'm hearing what you guys are saying and I, and I really appreciate that it's like, and we've got this work plan and we need to do this work plan. And I think the difference with park is we've always gotten things from staff where it comes in. And then we go, oh, okay, we're talking about this for a while. And then we go, you know, back to the work plan and we work on it. But we're, we're kind of used to getting things kind of out of the blue and not on a work plan. And so it's interesting hearing the art commission say it's not on the work plan. And it's like, yeah, it's not on the work plan.
Yeah, I've never heard that.
Right. And so we come from a different angle on this. That doesn't mean we're right. And it doesn't mean they're wrong.
I don't think I did anything right, so.
Still is that we are learning a new way of being and I really appreciate that focus of this is the work plan. And I agree with, uh, Chair Valdez about this does fit the work plan in some ways. And then my whole thing is I'm always thinking about how do we acquire and create more park space? And for me, park space has a definite, um, definition of how we look at park space and not just, you know, like, okay, now we're going to call it park space. So I, I mean, I think what we're being asked to say is, is there any interest in this? Do we have any interest of maybe being part of it? And I would say, you know, uh, I mean, I may be summarizing that incorrectly, but I, I feel like, yeah, I mean, I think anything we can do that beautifies and adds to our park land is something that is in our jurisdiction to be talking about and thinking about. Um, and I also hear the part of just send this with city council. But, you know, I think it's an exciting opportunity for us to maybe participate in more on the community center with, be it a sculpture, a park, whatever we can do to make this a better space for our public, so.
The, um, the other thing is that this is a conceptual or concept
Right.
uh, discussion. Uh, and then the, the question that we are asking ourselves is, do we want to hear more? I, my answer to that would be, I can't come to a conclusion if something is religious or political or beautiful or ugly or worth its cost or not worth its cost until I know more. I can't do it from this presentation, but it's enough for me to want to know more. And I would very strongly, my position is that we should, um, ask the, uh, the presenter to
Give us more?
As they develop more. And then, you know, I would, that's my first question. That's my first position. I want to know more. The second question is, um, do I generally believe in the concept? Do I think that there's value to the city to have some kind of a role such that we make an advisory to our council that we believe there should be? And then they decide yes or no on that. Um, I believe that, I believe that that is something that we should do. So that's, that's how I've come to this at this point.
Much like we hire, uh, the city has elected city council to make decisions for the city. Whoever hired Dr. Ward hired her for a reason. So I'm going to put my faith in her decision-making ability to run this museum. How she sees it as the, where you're the curator. I mean, you're, you're going to know better than me. I don't know. I, I'm not, I'm not very smart. I'm not going to know what to do here. You know, that's why you're hired in this position in the first place.
I hear you.
Your thing. And then if there's a problem, then, then we can step in.
I agree. But she has already stated an interest in having us support in, even in spirit, support what she is doing so that she doesn't feel that she's going to run into a roadblock down the road. Well, the only reason, the only way we can be that kind of a body to her would be to know more about what, what, what the museum is planning.
Well, what she said makes total sense. I mean, I thought that was clear. They want to do something for that portion.
We have, we have at least two, two commissioners, possibly more that want to understand what the land acknowledgement specifically would be, or they might not support it. Right? The last thing we need, the last thing the museum need is to have, have a commission not agreeing with something that they're doing. Which might translate into a view that the city is not supporting what the museum is doing on the land that they're managing. So I understand where the, where the chair, where the director is coming from. They're, they, they are looking for some level of inquisitiveness on our part, leading down a path to endorsement of what they're doing and agreement with what they're doing.
No, no, there's no motion. Um, so, but I'm thinking though, this discussion has been helpful for them because we are clearly not all on the same page. And so I would think that as Commissioner Ye said, they can just skip us. So, and just, and not bring the baggage of a divided commission.
An agreement on that? I think, you have, I think they can skip us. Um, I am concerned, I don't have a problem doing a call for art for sculpture. But I am very concerned about eliminating certain people from being able to do the sculpture when I don't know their authentic ethnicity. And I am not the person to go through somebody's ethnicity to find out if they're truly alone. We've had too many people that say there's something and they're not.
What about having artists collaborate with?
Yeah, I, I love the alone people or whoever to collaborate with the artist. Yeah, that'd be cool.
And then it would be open to anyone.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm not going to be the one that does the DNA test.
If, if, if I might suggest something, um, could we have maybe just a straw poll on, would this commission like to see further detail on this, on what the museum's proposing? Come back to this at some point.
Yes, that's my, that's my question that I would like to get to. I want to actually post the two questions. I'd like to see a straw poll on the two questions. So anybody else have any other comments or questions to ask? I just wanted to make one more comment. It is political. And so if we are limited by the political
Why do you say that?
Oh my goodness.
No, no, I'm serious. I am dead serious. I don't think it's universally decided that it is political. So do I think it's political?
Do you think it's political? You can say
It's not a, so do I think it's political?
Okay.
I think it's the right thing, but it's not, but that doesn't mean that it's not political in our world. And it is considered political and it is treated politically. Does that mean that, that I think that that's the right way to look at something? No, but that is how it is looked at. Therefore, it is typically defined as a political act when you do something like that. And when you have a land acknowledgement, it's considered political. In this country, in this day and age, it is considered political. And if you're asking me if I agree with it, no, I don't agree with that. I don't think it's political. I think it's the right thing to do. But I also don't think like most people. So it, I would say it is a political thing to do this. Am I unsupportive?
You're talking about the art.
I'm talking about the land acknowledgement. So, so I, I have to agree with the commissioners about that. But that doesn't mean that I don't want to have it come back and see where it's going and see what the proposal is. And I've said my other comments, but oh yeah, it's, it's political.
Could we separate those, the land acknowledgement and the art?
That's what I'm thinking.
Put a question, I'm going to put a question to the, to the commission and I just want a straw poll on this question. Are you as individual commissioners and raise your hand if you are in agreement or, 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 you know, want this to happen? To send the director off, but within, within awareness that we would like to see more when they are at the next step, whatever that step might be of refinement of their plan, that we would want to be shown that plan. That is my, that is the question on the table right now that I'd like to ask. Are you interested in seeing their next step?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand if you're in agreement with that question.
If you would like to see more.
If you would like to see more. And if you would not like to see more, raise your hand.
I'm going to say that it's more like, hey, it's your museum, go do what you want.
I'm, I'm with you.
So I'm not saying, you know, I'm saying it's your museum.
Right.
Please go do what you, what you are an expert at, because I don't know anything.
You don't want to know anything about it?
This commission is saying that you're split right now.
We're split three to three.
That you don't want to have anything to do with the art that's put up there, is that correct?
No, that wasn't the question. That wasn't the question.
They want to know more about the plan. Nothing to do with land acknowledgement.
The whole plan. So you don't want to see it?
The commission want to see where this is going.
We have three to do.
Trying to get it clear. I don't want to know, just don't do it.
No information. You don't want anything to do with it? Or you just don't want more information?
Don't want it to come back.
They don't want it to come back to this body.
So we would not do a call for art? We would not participate?
The museum would, as Commissioner Ye was saying, just do what they
Unless it's something we're supposed to do, then fine, but just go, you, you, do your thing. You're the, it's your museum.
Coming back to us for a call for art?
Exactly. That's what I mean. Yeah.
We don't need to see her plan for her part.
We don't know what all these like salvia, all this, I don't, you, you pick it.
That's what our commission does. We put art on public property. I don't understa- okay.
Yeah, I understand why they would never want to know where public art is going. I think it's your, uh, with, all due respect, I think it's the question. So if it were, do we want to potentially participate in a call for art?
But that's different. That's a separate question. I just want to know if we want this to come back to us at the next phase, whatever they describe that.
Well, it's a three to three.
Because they're not obliged to, right? They're not obliged to.
We have enough information. Three, three.
Okay, the, the next question has to do with, um, parsing out elements. Which is, is this commission interested in being involved with a call for art that should emanate from this plan? That might emanate from this plan. Yeah.
I think it's too speculative to vote on that. I can't vote on that. It's too, I mean, a call for art that's tied to, um, um, what they call it, a land
They can bring us stuff anytime.
They can come anytime, anytime they want to, they can come back.
Are we still the same? Yeah, if it involves us, bring it back. But if it doesn't, I, do, do your thing.
Yeah. So they're going to do the land acknowledgement and come back to us for a call for art if they want to come to us. Person that wants The request, the call for art in addition to the land acknowledgement?
There wasn't no specific
So asking for specificity.
Yes.
But you're not open to her coming back with specificity?
Come back when it involves us, but if not, go do your thing.
That was the first question. Okay, so we're not necessarily split. Now I'm hearing interest.
Okay, okay, so.
We don't even need
So in reference to, are they going to come back for any of this aspect of their plan? We have a three, three split right now. I will give you more information on it and I'll work with the chair to see if this does come back again, because it may come back anyway, if council or staff feels that it needs to come back.
I'm hearing people say if it applies to our commission, bring it back.
Yeah, she doesn't have to listen to us anyway.
There's a call for art though, if they're looking to put a sculpture in there, this is the park art, grass and cultural, so. There's also the cultural aspect of it, which is not religious at all. So, okay. It is political then.
Do you want, Chair Valdez, do you want to thank Dr. Ward for coming?
Not quite yet. Not quite yet. I want to make sure that, um, that you're, you're set on what you're
We're set. That was good. Yeah, we've got it.
So one more question for you is, um, do you believe that we need to inform or kick anything up to city council at this time? Thank you. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Hi, Mary Valley, don't be back in so much.
Who's our council person? Non is not in attendance today, so that's, that's the one thing I was going to add to that. Council is aware of what goes on at these meetings. And they'll just keep informed until a decision needs to be, or a recommendation
She'll, she'll be watching it tomorrow.
Yeah, she'll watch it tomorrow. Council member. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Ye knocked out the door in there.
Okay, our next item is a discussion on collaboration with Arts Los Altos. Uh, discuss how park can possibly collaborate with Arts Los Altos, identify barriers or issues. Um, do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
On this?
Yes, we do. We have, um, Maddie McBurney with Arts Los Altos.
Oh my goodness. Okay, so I'm going to give you guys our public art map that we got last time. Um, I'm so excited that you guys are having this discussion of how we can collaborate together. Arts Los Altos has, um, tried to, um, come to your meeting several times before you were a park. And I think this is the perfect meeting because you're working on collaborating now. And one of the, um, collaborations that we really talked to about was trying to put the city logo on this downtown public art map that we presented to you before. Um, it is out with merchants that have sponsored it. And we are hoping, since it includes all the city art downtown, we're hoping that we can get the logo on there. Also, we're grateful to you that you mentioned, um, to take the word walking off and we did that. So it just says downtown public art now. And we're just very excited. It's had huge reception. People are just running out of them wherever they are downtown. The next part is, um, we want to do an art on Third, um, concept. We've started putting murals there. We'd love the city to add sculptures there, which you have this year. You added a really big one, which is great. But there'd be great if you could do wayfinding signage. There are so many other ways to incorporate public art on Third Street. And then the last one is if we could work together to, um, if you wanted to subcontract with us to get work done, since you have heavy work planned, we'd love to collaborate with you on projects, um, any projects that you would like to do. Um, we have our own call for arts set up. We can help you with that. And we can work together. And that's our goal this year too, is to do outreach with the History Museum, which we're, um, doing a project with them. And we're also doing a project with, um, Lava. We're going to do a paint by number mural at the Art and Wine Festival. Uh, what else? Let's see, History Museum. Oh, with the schools there, we're doing, uh, at the Art and Wine Festival, we're having in the kids zone. We're going to have a whole section for kids to do hands-on art. Oh, I know what it was, the State Street Market. So in October, we're doing a live, it's called, um, live painting with the muralists. We'll be in the center and in the front, we'll have families, a place for families and kids to do art out there. So we're doing a lot of really cool stuff. We're also helping with walking tours for the Relay for Life. And also, um, the woman who has a business called Art Drawn to Art, she's going to be doing a event April twentieth and we're going to be doing a walking tour there. And it's going to be really awesome. Um, if you guys have time, there's going to be plein air painters down there and all of her students will be there in the gallery. It's called Drawn to Art and it's a woman who has the business down at Loyola Corners or It's happening downtown at the plaza. And then we will be doing walking tours and there will also be, um, plein air painters.
So, hey, hey, Dan, um, I, I had, I have no history with the Arts Commission, so I think you probably explained your relationship. But yeah, so I'm guessing, just, just correct me if I'm wrong, you're five oh one C three, I'm guessing?
Yes.
And then you have easements throughout downtown to put art?
Yes, so we're a nonprofit and we are, we work with the property owners. So it's all private property with private funding and private property, but all public art. So it has to be accessible to the public all the time. Every piece we do cannot be indoors or anywhere.
Yeah, I got you. Okay. All right, thanks.
And that's the other thing I want to say is we're all on the same page with public art. We all want to get it out there and educate our community and make it just a really vibrant, fun place, uh, as an art destination. That's almost one of our goals, create Los Altos to be an art destination. Okay.
We have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions if we can, we can't discuss.
Um, where does most of your funding come from, I'm just curious?
Our funding comes from private donations and grants, all of it comes from private donations and grants.
Mostly like Los Altos residents or?
So far, all Los Altos, Los Altos Hills residents.
So, another question, so is the ask, is the ask also for us to like help with funding then?
It's not necessarily, I think mostly we just would like to do things on city property as well and it's hard because that is like a limitation in so many ways. And, um, it's not always about funding, it's more that we would just like to be able to do things on city property sometimes. Okay.
So, I wanna make sure I heard this right, you have three major programs that, that you would like collaboration with us, the brochure? Which hasn't focused.
Yes, we just. Our scope is downtown because to do private commercial property, it's Rancho is all privately owned. And Loyola Corners, uh, it's mostly city or privately owned too. So we can't do it there.
Okay, second thing is the art on Third District, you'd like to develop that as a, like a district?
Yes, we're trying to create that street to be.
That would then include a collaboration of not only public art on private property, but public art on public property. And just like to have an integrated destination.
Yes.
That you could publicize?
Yes, and the wayfinding. Yes, Art on Third is a brand that we came up with, we created a slide presentation which we, it's on the city website, I believe. Um, that shows where the city could put art and also wayfinding signage, so at each end uh, people would know to come in there, that's artistic and decorative and also overarching silhouette metal sculpture things. Anyway, there's a whole, there's a whole slide presentation.
The last, um, thing was, you used the word subcontract. I mean, we, we're gonna do, we have on our work plan to do a call for art, but we then offload that to you and then you do the call for art?
Yes.
So that's it?
Yes, we narrow it down, we have a curated artist list, already formed. And we would narrow it down, we'd do the call for art, then we'd bring it to you, say, which one do you like, and then you guys would say we like that.
So you do like the front end and then we would make the final approvals and all that. And then, um, that would be on public land.
We would help you.
Um, so instead of two calls for art a year? We could do five calls for art a year, okay, um. All right, any other? Clarifying questions?
Clarifying questions so we can let her sit down.
Yeah, 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 I have a question, so, um, I, I mean, and, and I'm wondering like, why? Why do you think there's a need for, and I, I love a lot of the artwork that you guys put up. Why do you think there's a need for Art Los Altos and the Art Commission?
Okay, this is a really good question.
I was trying not to insult you in any way, so I felt that this question to me, okay, good, okay.
Yeah, it's a really good question, so just so you guys know, when we're doing the work that we do, everyone thinks that the city of Los Altos is doing the work that we do, so I just want you to know that they're always complimenting the city of Los Altos. But part of the reason that we came about was that someone asked us to come back. So we were doing a lot of, I was on the Arts Commission for eight years. And we were doing a lot of outreach and so creating enthusiasm about public art because I went to a lot of public art conventions and I just think it's more than just a sculpture, it's like interactive, audio, visual, there's just so many great artists doing great things out there. So I was like, okay, bring it back to Los Altos, and so I, I was done with my term on the Art Commission and then someone said, what can you do, and so we found out that we could do public art on private property with private funding. But we didn't have to go through the city council process. And so that's why we started Arts Los Altos, because someone asked us to.
I have a couple more questions.
Can I ask one?
Are you, I know that Lava, Los Altos Village Association is going to start a, um, initiative to create our downtown triangle, specifically not the rest of the city, the downtown triangle as an art destination for the state. Are you involved in that program at all?
Yes, we've been asked to be on that coalition.
Okay, um, so, okay, so this would become possibly an instrument of that representation, of that initiative?
I guess, I think it was an inspiration, to be honest with you. Cause I think, uh, we've been meeting with Scott a lot and now he's reaching out to us.
Cause I know that, I noticed you have galleries on here, because that's.
Yes, so the, the people who, oh, on the map.
Yeah.
Yes, so we included the galleries, even if, well, we started because Amy Mattson, who owns that gallery wanted to sponsor us and she wanted to be on the map, and so we thought we should include all the galleries.
So, yeah, so you have, do you have Gallery Nine and?
We have viewpoints, we have the new his and hers galleries on there.
I just wanted to know if there, you know, was it the genesis together, whether one inspired the other? Because I know that that initiative is just really commencing now.
It's just beginning and it's, I think, everybody is just excited about what's going on. Oh, the walking tours, by the way, if you haven't done them, they're every first Friday at five o'clock for an hour. And that has created a lot of enthusiasm, not with just Los Altos people, but Mountain View, we have a new person on our team. She's, came up to me in the walking tour and said, I wanna help you guys, I was like, what? You know, hardly anybody volunteers, so she's awesome, she's a great, uh, person, so anyway, it's, it's, uh, it's been a really, um, great thing, but our goal this year is to try to collaborate and re, do more outreach with all the organizations that already exist.
Actually, have you said this, when did you, when did your term end? You remember? Like, what I'm wondering is, did you have a hand or?
No, they did that after I left, we, uh, we tried to do it, there is a master plan and we did put that in front of city council, but they rejected it.
Okay.
And that was right at the end of my term.
So, I have, um, a, a few questions, so two more, vetting, how do you vet your artists? What's your process?
All of us, our entire team, which is now about eight people, we all contribute people that we feel would be, uh, very highly experienced artists because we want really good quality for the work that we put up for Los Altos, and so everybody puts these names together, researches it, and we try to stick to, uh, the Bay Area, we have some Sacramento artists and Los Angeles, we've sent call for arts, but nobody, um, was selected. And then we as a team select the artists by, um, we do a theme and a call for art and so we.
All eight of you.
All of us, yeah, we all sit down and select together.
And then how about saturation, do you think there's a point where there's enough?
You know what? I don't know, cause sometimes they're small and sometimes they're not seen and, um, I don't know, maybe. I know someone asked me that too, I said.
I have one last, oh, I'm done, and I think, no, you have.
So, uh, is Art Los Altos plan to basically try to put as many murals on private buildings in downtown, is that kind of the plan?
Our goal is two to three projects a year and sometimes during events, so I'm actually wearing one of our scarves from our, have you seen the Los Altos mural? That went downtown?
Oh, it just went in somewhere.
Yeah, so that was a community mural event where the community came and painted the mural and mostly high school kids, so it's not necessarily a mural either, we've done two sculptures as well. But it might be an event where it's interactive, like the live painting event that will be at the State Street Market, people will come and paint. We're not sure what, the paintings won't be mural, they'll be on canvases, we don't know what we'll do with those, so it might be an event rather than a mural.
Right, I'm just following up on Commissioner Morris's point about saturation.
Yeah.
Is there any point where you're going to stop trying to put art on walls of private buildings in downtown Los Altos?
Probably when we don't have anybody who wants us to do that anymore. And like I said, only about two to three projects a year, that's all we can do.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, what is your criteria for selecting art, like obviously we have a pretty, bit of contentious conversation, right, about like not picking political or religious pieces, I mean, do you guys have like a set of rules or standards?
We don't have that, we don't have a set of rules or standards, but we do know, we do have a characteristic of Los Altos, uh, sheet that we sent to artists, and that was actually comprised from interviews that we did when we were on the commission, so Karen and I, who started Arts Los Altos. Um, we used that and then our team came up with more, um, characteristics of Los Altos, and so that's try to, that is kind of what we try to stick to, is the characteristics of Los Altos, and I don't know what those are right at hand, but if you go to our website, they're on there. And the political, um, part of, there is a sculpture, I just wanna say this, uh, not at Lincoln Park, but the other side, uh, in front of a church over there, I think it says peace in another language. Um, and that was a little bit, I remember when I was on the commission, there was some talk about that being religious. But then we all decided, no, we're doing it.
The red one?
Arabic and it says peaks. So that was a little bit.
Why is that religious?
Cause it's in another language and it means peace, I don't know. It's there, I'm just telling you that we, it was a donation and we accepted it, and the city council accepted it.
And, and that was the perfect case where there were a whole bunch of people that felt it was political.
Yeah.
And they didn't want it, and all it says is. So, you know, anyway.
Okay, so, anyway, I know you wanna go home and so do I, but thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um. So now we move to discussion. We can do this a couple of ways, we can just in general invite your comments, you know, as we did before. Or we can consider each of the three major, um, topics individually and your, your comments on that. Uh, you know, the, mainly the brochure, putting the city seal on it. Uh, the second thing, the art, supporting the art on Third District, and then thirdly, the idea of, I'll, I'll use the word that was presented, subcontracting, that's, consider that a, not a literal term at this point. But it probably could be, if there's some agreement that needs to be written. Subcontracting Arts Los Altos to, means a number of calls for art that we can do as a commission. So. I say we talk about each one individually, just so that we get more crystallized opinions from, from you, um, in the notes. Is there any objection to doing that?
From what I heard, sorry, what was your name? When I heard Maddie saying subcontracting, it was more like they, they're gonna do it anyways if we ask them. Like, I subcontract my, my kids to take out the garbage, I guess, that way, because I'm just telling them, hey, can you do this, and they say yes. That's what it sounds like you would be doing, so it's not really some kind of contractual relation.
Put it on public property, it is subcontracting.
Okay, but we're asking them to do what we should be doing.
Exactly. So it's a matter of increasing our compass, capacity vertically by having a subcontractor.
We can go, go through that. I'm just confused, alright, go ahead.
I would disagree about capacity.
Okay, well, let, let's get to it when we get, is anybody having objections to addressing each of the asks individually? Okay, so we'll do that, so first on the idea of the brochure and putting the city seal here on the front, which demonstrates that we are, you know, sponsoring it, that this is a collaborative um, initiative in terms of publicizing the public art on both public and private property in the downtown triangle. So, I'm a no.
Well, what are the guidelines on this? I'm putting the seal, yeah, putting seals on stuff?
City's open, this would be a recommendation from the commission that's saying we, we, we're good with the city seal being put on there, so, and that's what staff is looking for, this advisory.
Alright, you said, you said that.
You wanna give a reason?
The rationale is that we lose control, we're supposed to be the controlling, we're supposed to be taking care. We give the seal to somebody else. Everything's lost.
Um, okay, so. Right now, the level of control by putting the seal on, we lose control.
Because then they'll change the brochure, something else will be on there, the seal will still be there.
I, is that how it works?
No, you can always just say, take it off.
If they revise the brochure, the content of the brochure, then we have to readjudicate.
Where does that say that, somewhere?
I think historically, when the city puts its seal on something, it has a degree, that's the whole point of putting the seal on, on it. Okay, so, um, Commissioner Morris, do you wanna make your comments?
Um, I, um, am hesitant to put our seal on this because there's some art that already exists that is a little controversial and because we've had no say in the, um, guidelines and the criteria for the art that's been selected by Arts Los Altos. Um, I just worry that it might, um, you know, draw some controversy, especially since we're so considerate about the pieces that we choose. Considerate meaning we follow like strict guidelines. There's one mural, it's number seven, I, I think there's some controversy with that one, right?
The historical photos one?
I believe so, I think there was, I think there was some controversy related to that one, if I'm remembering correctly. Regardless, I just think that, um. I think there's like some controversy, like some like, there was like some racial undertones.
Well, there, there was some racial, well, there were certain people that were upset with certain people being painted on it.
You're always gonna be so unupset about anything, what's the problem here?
True, okay, um. I'm just gonna say that.
Oh, I, I hear your opinion, I, I think your opinion is, is, is a, is a valid thing.
I, I would like to participate in the art walk, or, sorry, the art, the Third Street event. I don't know if that is on, is that not what was.
We're now only talking about the brochure.
Commissioner Morris, your opinion on the brochure?
I'm just figuring out that some of what's on this brochure is ours and some, ours means.
Yeah, because it's all of art.
Okay, okay, so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just catching up on some of this, so. I think it's confusing, I think if we're gonna do something like this, like a map that has public and private, that it must.
Public art, just so you know, it's all public.
That's been funded by private funds and funded by private and by public funds, those two things that differentiate it. I think that, um, this, a map such as that should be driven by our commission.
We have a map, we have a brochure.
And that's fine.
The whole town.
And that's fine, and I think that that's how the, um, logo should be used, is something that's driven by our commission, not driven by a privately funded organization, and that's how I feel about government stuff. That when you have a government seal on it, it should be government driven.
So, for example, when the largest event in our city which is, um, Fine Art and Park. It is driven by a private entity, which is the Rotary Club of Los Altos. And it has a city seal on it, the city supports it.
Sure, is this a question from her, or are you?
I wanna, I wanna know, is, is that the kind of thing that you're talking about, that?
I don't know enough about that to know whether or not it's appropriate for that particular thing. I'm only talking about a map that would have a city seal on it, that we would be approving as a commission. And I know we're kind of new as a commission, but my opinion is that if.
If the city seal is gonna be on something like that, it needs to be a map that's driven by our commission.
So I feel like this is great, that they're including us in the, in their map and, um, but I, I do think that it is confusing, and, and Arts Los Altos does such a great job, they have so many pieces of art all over the place, um, they don't need us and, um, I mean, I feel like it's nice that they've included us in this mock-up, the, us being this city, you know, public art. But I do feel what I said is that it, it ought to be driven by us to have the seal on it.
So when you say driven, you mean?
It should be our map.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be our tour and, and if we include them, we include them, but it needs to be, I think it has to be clearly defined within the map that this is the public art that's paid for by public funds and on public land. And then this is the art that is put in privately with private funds. I think that needs to be delineated within that.
Okay.
So either we work collaboratively that way, that seems like the right thing to do, or I, I just don't support the confusion.
I agree with Commissioner Morris and the other commissioners. We already have a brochure that we've been trying to update, but we can't get it on this commission's agenda. I don't know why, but we haven't been able to do that. We've been talking about it since.
Your agenda items went thin.
It's been, it was, we started in October, we asked for it last February and it's still not on the agenda. So we already have a brochure that predates this brochure. So I'm not exactly sure why we're having trouble getting to that on the agenda, but. So that's number one, why I don't think that we should put the public city seal on this other brochure, which by the way is, is a, is a nice brochure, but there, there are rules that apply to us that don't apply to them. And so if you put the city seal on this public art map for Arts Los Altos, we're gonna be potentially endorsing art that we don't have any say in choosing. And it could potentially violate the guidelines that were approved by the city council. And the other, I mean, and they do try to, you know, try to address that, but it's not very clear to me. And then there is confusion, as, as Arts Los Altos said, there is confusion about what art is city sponsored and what art is they sponsor. And I can tell you, those of us who are on the art commission heard a lot of negative things about some of the art that, that was put out by them because people thought it was us. And in fact, we got in a public comment from somebody who, who kind of articulated that they're not a fan of the Arts Los Altos art. And I've also heard other very negative comments, which I'm not gonna repeat here, I can't, if you want me to, but I'm not gonna repeat them. But I think it's important to try as best as possible to maintain the distinction. Plus, I don't think we should see our role and our responsibility for installing public art in public places. That's our job. So we shouldn't be sharing that or.
You're talking about the third thing now.
I know, okay, sorry, I'm, okay, but I, I actually know because I think it still applies, it doesn't affect the city sale. This would delegate our authority. So, so I'll stop there.
Okay. Is that what you're asking?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
And so, so when I heard, Maddie, when I heard you speaking, you, you mentioned something where the citizens already assumed that the city was doing what you guys were doing, which to me sounds like you're not being acknowledged for all your hard work. By putting the seal on this, aren't you even making that even more so? So why would you even want that?
Commissioner Warner, is this the thing where we're not supposed to?
Oh, I can't ask you. I don't know why she would want to do that because it now assumes that we're doing everything, even though we're not doing any of this. So I think for, for just preserving their, all the hard work they're doing, I don't need any credit. I just want it to get done. Okay, so I'm okay just leaving it how it is. I don't, I mean, I'm indifferent, okay, but again, from I, I, I'm a, I'm a lawyer, I used to be one. When you do stuff like that, people will just impute liability to the city for no reason because people are.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we just limit that if possible?
Good point. Did I ask everybody? Okay, my opinion is that because I come from the place where I want more art rather than less art. And that there's a lot of art that is out there now that we don't even have in our city that we can explore on the leading edge of art. I tend to try to believe in initiatives that can be perhaps more adventurous than a city can be. At the same time, though, because I'm part of the city, I want the city to have its fingers in as many pots as possible. And if we completely separate ourselves from the work that is going on in this group, and this group can be metaphorical for other kinds of groups in the city, other kinds of nonprofits, other kinds of organizations, then we, we're actually losing control and losing the value of our advice or our procedures, our policies. You know, if, if you don't like what Arts Los Altos is making, well, what better way to maybe channel what they're doing than, than to get more involved with them?
Are we at topic one still? Are we at topic one still?
We're at topic one, which is the brochure.
Yeah, okay.
So with that, and also if we were imposing this on Arts Los Altos, then I would say, yeah, we're trying to take, steal their spotlight and take credit away from things that they've done. But they're the ones coming to us. So I think they're seeing value in putting the seal on it. That hasn't translated into money, but it has translated into collaboration potentially. I, I understand what's being said about driving, you know, this symbolizing who's driving the, the car. But again, if it has the seal on it, then people will know kind of whether it's true or not who's driving the car. But if it doesn't have the seal, to me that creates confusion. But, so I, I kind of look at it through a different lens. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying you guys are wrong. I'm not saying that the history isn't there. I'm just saying that I want the city seal on as many things as possible so that the city can not only get credit for being broad and, and involved, but also that we can have influence on what happens in the city more than if we don't get involved.
Having the seal on or off doesn't limit your ability. Having the seal on or off anything doesn't limit your ability to have influence.
I'm talking about the city having influence. Yeah, it does limit you.
Why?
Because we have no jurisdictional authority over what happens on private land.
But we don't have that anyways.
You could have some influence. For example, if we subcontract some things or, or, or just because we're collaborating. If, if usually when you're collaborating and, and you know, if I had, if we could change the process and I get to ask a question, one of the questions that I didn't think of asking that I would ask would be if we park, if we put our city seal on there, you know, how would, how does the park, the, this commission, how does this commission influence your call for art process? I didn't ask that.
Are you saying that if we put our city seal on then, on their brochure, then we get to tell them what art they can do and can't do? I don't think.
No, I didn't say that. What I said was, we need to ask the question, what they're ready to accept for having the city seal on there? Because it could include exactly what you've said. Something less. We, we don't, we.
Have we asked that question?
I think we would require, our guidelines would require us to be able to control it and follow our guidelines, which they, they don't have any guidelines, so they're free to do what they want.
They have some criteria that they follow. It's just they don't have the same guidelines that the city follows. So, and then they, they follow a process that require, that uses eight people. We follow a process that uses whoever's on the commission. There are some differences for sure. But we haven't, we didn't ask those kinds of questions. But as far as this, you know, I, at the end of the day, it's going to be, who, we have jurisdiction over this decision or is this your jurisdiction?
The city is looking for the commission to make a recommendation on that.
Well, I think based, based on what you're hearing here, you don't have that recommendation. We have a grand minority of one that would favor that. And then, so I'm gonna close that part and I'm gonna move on to the, the art on Third District idea. Which is something that is already kind of existing and branded. It's just a matter of whether we would want to support that and endorse it.
What's, what's unique about Third that they just can't do on every other street that I've seen downtown?
They want to create it as a destination, a branded destination. Yes, there's art everywhere, but they wanted to create this. They've created this brand called Art on Third, which allows them to, to not only put art on the street that's public on private and public on public, but also to create programs and events that would draw people. I mean, that's what I've heard in the, in the presentation or the, the commentary.
And what's keeping them from doing that right now?
Nothing. Well, because they can't include public, you know, there's a, there's a public aspect to it. You know?
We have some colors, so maybe for Commissioner Yee and that is, so they basically want to put a bunch of art on Third Street and call it Art on Third. They can't put art on public places. They can only work with private property owners, which they've done, but the arts, the Public Arts Commission did contribute to that by putting a very big sculpture on that same street. So we, there's a huge, beautiful sculpture that's there now. And I think the issue is. It's number nine. It's the vortex.
I've never seen that bowl. Where is that?
Upside of the bank.
Do you get that much?
It's right across from Chase.
Commissioners to go see.
Patty Corner Chase?
Yeah.
It's, it's a little bit farther down.
Which direction?
If you're going that way is left.
Left, that could be any infinite, right?
On the map, you know.
Right, you're going to Wood Hill.
Yes, going towards Wood Hill.
On Third Street, make a left.
Oh, you know, I see, okay, I see. So it's not, it's not gigantic, but it's, okay.
It's noticeable. And so, but the issue that the, that we as a commission have is that we have been asked by residents in Los Altos, Los, South Los Altos, Baja Los Altos to, to contribute more art down there because we do have a concentration of public art sculptures on public land in downtown.
Because it's downtown.
Yeah, exactly. And so, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to push more sculpture there before we come back to downtown, if possible.
Is it just the placate that people heard complaining about the South, the South?
Other saturated, I mean.
Because downtown Los Altos has a lot, more than fifty percent of all the art. So we've been trying to expand, to give more young people, et cetera, art in different areas.
Because there's a lot of residents of Los Altos that don't go downtown.
Art didn't have any art as of three years ago.
Okay. Question, and didn't city council ask that more art be put in South Los Altos? Didn't they call it an art desert?
Yes.
Correct clue. Yeah, that's, so just so you know that sort of.
Going back to the Third Street, are we all talking about that?
Yes.
Talking about the Art on Third District.
Yeah, do it. More art, yay.
Commissioner Warren, what's the question?
Art on Third, do, are you, do you like that yet? Do you want the city to be involved in that?
I think Arts Los Altos should do what they want to do. I think we have our priorities, which is, which are different. I mean, if we can accommodate them and, and put public art there, great, but I think our, my priority right now is South Los Altos. So I would say for now, I guess, I guess if you're asking for yes or no, I guess I'd say no.
I want to understand this a little bit more. So I think when you create an art district or an art area, that what you're doing is you're creating a way that you can promote an area as well. So it's a, a way of saying, I think what Maddie was saying too, is that the, that lava is trying to make a state. I don't wanna, I don't know if I'll get it right. No, they're trying to do a state destination. So lava is trying to make art a destination for the street in Los Altos, in the, for the state. So there's.
No, no. Okay, lava is initiating a program where they want the downtown triangle.
Yeah.
To be a state destination. To be an, an art destination.
Yeah.
Throughout the Bay Area up to and including the state.
Right, so it's a way to promote an area, which I think there's no harm for us to have more people coming in and spending their dollars in art.
Smart about this. So please, is there another city that you can tell me what lava is trying to be like? Is that like Laguna Beach? Is that where, what they're talking about? You know, where it's like all art downtown, like.
And you know what lava is, right?
Los Altos Village Association.
I mean, I, I see the ad.
Okay, okay. There are lots of cities that have art districts.
Okay, you mean comparable.
Hillcrest and Gero has an art district.
Oh, Hillcrest.
Carmel, you know, Carmel has an art district.
Okay, that's on you.
They've made a street or two.
I just need to know something.
Point is that I think it does bring people into a city and you can make a destination. And I think that would be one of the focuses on Art on Third. I think if we can work it into the, what we do, you know, as far as making more art happen in that area in a way that helps enhance what Art Los Altos is already doing down there.
Sure.
I think we should look at it.
We can look at working with lava.
We can look at working with lava and coming up with something that would be complimentary to what they're trying to do because it helps our businesses. So I think that's important. And on the same breath, being someone in South Los Altos, and I'll say that I have a, you know, a little connection there. I'd like to see, if we're gonna be doing that for businesses downtown, Los, the Loyola Corners area deserves it, deserves that love as well. And so we have these other business districts. Loyola Corners has public space. Also, we now own that triangle piece and that can have art on it. So there are areas where we can put artwork in Loyola Corners.
I keep hearing like the south and north. Why don't you just do both?
Well, and, and that's, I'm saying if we're gonna do one, if we're doing, it's like being a parent. If you're gonna do one for one kid, you're gonna do it for the other kid too. So I think we have to look at how are we balancing all of it. So that's, that's my opinion about that. I think it's important about, I think it's important about collaboration though, in that guide. I actually read the, the art guidelines for public art. There's a, a thing that says we can only collaborate one time every thirty-six months. It's on page sixteen. So I think we may have a little bit of a tricky, I don't know if anybody's read this, other than the art.
That's for public art. Okay, but I've asked a procedural question of staff, which is how many of the guidelines that, that were written by either Park or Public Arts have now been grandfathered into our disposition? Or do we need to reaffirm, reaffirm them, re-review them? That is, that is a technical question that I think we need to ask council.
Yeah, I think. Staff can look, staff can look further into that at this point.
Always asked.
Especially not just as it's written, it's as interpreted, so.
This stuff can move forward, but I think we can have to talk about these things. And I think it's good if we take. We need to agendize these conversations because all I'm doing is looking at the documentation that we have. And then I'm saying like, hey, we have these things that are saying, you can do this, you can't do that.
I understand, but what I'm saying is there's a jurisdictional problem right now because it is not clear that any pre-existing policies from either commission is automatically grandfathered into this commission.
But it's also not the opposite of it's not.
Not necessarily, but I, I mean, if you just address. Yeah, you, you bring up policies. I think that's without question. It's just a matter of addressing what your interest is here without looking for things that will prevent you from saying yes or no.
And just trying to make sure that.
I know, but if. That's what makes sure of that. If it moves forward, if this dies right here, we won't have to look into it.
Okay, I'm just like looking at.
So let me, let me kind of get everybody's opinion. So.
Art on Third. The thing that I like is we do events. Park does events, we do events. If we did an event on Third, I mean, the old Park and the old art. If we did it like, I don't know, remember the painting in the orchard? What if we did something like that?
So more programmatic things.
Programmatic.
Programmatic things, agreed.
So like Janet said, we did install that piece of art intentionally to participate in the Third Street exposure. Also, I find it really frustrating that we're investing all this time debating on things that we don't even know if they're gonna be viable. Like city council needs to give us like confirmation on what our rules are. I mean, quite frankly, like, we're here, sorry, I just, I'm very frustrated because I don't feel like these commissions really are meant to be merged together. I just don't think we're aligned, but that's fine. That's a whole separate issue. I, yeah, but this is case in point for me, so. Sorry. I mean, you are not alone. So I think we're basically ZD being both. Sorry, zero-based budgeting, never mind. Are we ready to move on?
I haven't given my opinion.
Okay.
So I, I, I'm in favor of collaborating on Art and Third. I, I would like, I'm very much, to me, the programmatic aspects is something where there's a strong opportunity for either things that we do by ourselves, but you know, with the understanding that they, they know that we're doing it or actual direct collaboration, community events. To the extent that we want to put more public art on public land on Third Street, that's something that we can decide separately. But I'm, I'm very much in favor of, of branding Third Street as a subset art district within this larger triangle. this larger triangle plan that, that our community organizations are already putting in motion. Okay, so now the third one is the last one, which is subcontracting. The idea of subcontracting um calls for art to Art Los Altos. I'll, I'll go back to the.
I'm not.
Youngs.
Absolutely not.
Youngs.
Subcontracting art, so having Art Los Altos essentially like select art for us.
Isn't that our job?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's kind of like my same view of like a consultant. Like, I don't see the point of that other than hiring them to make a decision that you're gonna do anyway, so you can CYA. I just, it doesn't take us long to do this stuff. The stuff out there looks awesome. And we took, what, an hour to do that?
Yeah.
They do look good, don't they?
Yeah.
I went over, get a drink of water, I look great.
Okay.
No. No, because doesn't City Council have to approve our final selection anyway? So what, it's like, I don't understand the best, yeah, no.
To me, it's, uh, I, I come from tech and I could not have done my job without capacity expansion. So I have no, um, I'm agnostic on the idea of um, um, expanding that capacity through some means and, and as long as we maintain complete control over the uh, the outcome, the decision of what art gets installed on public land.
But we wouldn't have complete control because they'd be selecting for us. They'd be narrowing it down for us.
Just, I, I'm not trying to influence anybody.
I, I am not against the idea of subcontracting because I would subcontract other experts in art, whether they're professional or amateur. If I wanted to hear different ideas, we wouldn't have to go forward with a single recommendation that they brought forward to us. Ultimately, we are in control. And we could even say, you have to bring seven ideas to us, not two, not one, not three. You know, there are things, there's, when you decide your contract, you can just, you can, you can name your terms and they might walk away from those terms. They might not want those terms. So I, I personally, um, I see subcontracting as nothing more than capacity expansion. We heard Sally Meadows complain that we had too many calls for art on our work plan. I didn't agree with her, but it's her right to say that. But this way, we can almost assure that we can get more calls for art than if we were just doing it by ourselves.
Managing the manager.
We are City Council subcontractors. We're the advisory committee on art.
We are.
So it'd be like the subcontractor hiring a subcontractor?
Absolutely, it happens all the time. But anyways, that's just.
Manny, do you want to?
I'm in the minority, but that's my opinion.
Manny, what was that? Want, want to interject? I just, I, I just want to make one statement. And, and, and I, I could be wrong in the way I interpreted what the presentation was. But I think the subcontracting aspect is what you're getting from staff. So taking, so if you just put it in that context, I'm, I'm, like I said, not trying to influence anybody's decision. But Jamie and I were trying to work out, mind you, we're not art specialists, trying to work out the cafe system and you did not see all the art that came in. We had to cut a line based on the early voting in the cafe system. We're not professionals, but we did our best as just taking numbers and saying, this is the cutoff. We can't take eighty-six uh versions of art to put on the wall to the commission. So we cut it off. And I believe it was thirty-five or something. We, we, in our best, organized it the best we thought we could present it to you and we brought it to you for your approval. My interpretation from a staff aspect is that's kind of what they would do in place of staff as a subcontractor. So that's, that's all I'm saying?
That's a really good analogy.
Uh, because that's what I felt and, and Jamie and I were, were struggling to make the best decision for you as possible. And we're not art specialists. So I just wanted to put that out there. Okay.
So the only comment I would make to that is that I, I think that's a great example that you just showed of a form of subcontracting. However, all commissions in the city have been given a somewhat soft but meaningful directive to not demand so much from staff. The entire reorganizations are all about that. Let's call us, you know, let's call it how it is. So, you know, for us to, I mean, I, that's just continues with my opinion. Again, capacity expansion, I love it. So and, and I understand that I'm in the minority, so I'm not, I'm not dispelling that in any way.
Yeah, I, I'm very confused. There were eighty-six and we only got thirty-six?
It was any sense of sixty-eight.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense to me because I thought we are the ones that were supposed to be picking the art, not staff.
Yeah, well, that process, I think, we explained that we didn't bring all of them to you and that's what the cafe system was used for. You scored it. You also, you saw all of them, you scored them.
Oh, okay.
We brought it to you, what we brought to you.
Okay, I, no, I, okay.
You made the decision of where the cutoff was gonna be.
Yeah.
That's why you didn't judge for final everything. You saw all of it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You didn't judge it all, okay, here at the table.
That's why we rated it like one to twenty.
Yes.
Yeah. Actually, I guess, probably about capacity. So the Public Arts Commission got a lot done because we are very effective um, political uh position and we worked. I mean, we got stuff done, so we had the capacity. And I think, you know, if that's here, we have the capacity. I don't think that we should be exploring, entering into the equivalent of a joint venture with a five of them, two of three, saying, because we can't do the work. Because the problem that we can't do the work is because we can't get on the agenda. So, I mean, I mean, we can talk about more, more about the future agenda items, but.
By the way, the minutes don't have the future agenda item on the agenda, you could probably start with the box.
Thank you.
I asked if the future agenda items were here, but I don't see them, so.
Oh, that's a lot.
Redwood Grove, Pathway, Art Tours.
Blah, 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 blah. She can just put on.
For the art commissioners that are now park commissioners, if I may. The question is. Well, it's for the commissioners that have experience in the art background. And I would, I would assume that they will ask us, you know, that have more experience occasionally in park stuff. But here's my question. And it's for staff and it's for everybody. What is stopping anyone in the community from sharing any artists that they think are important for us to look at and consider putting in the city? Is there any rule anywhere, whether it's valid or invalid, now that we're a combined committee or commission, that stops people from walking in here with pictures of art and saying, we think you should look at this, we think you should look at this.
The only thing that's stopping them is the fact that we do not promote that activity.
Okay, but I just want to know if there's anything that can stop people.
The city.
Because this is one of the sites. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Anybody can walk in.
Do that.
So Art Los Altos can bring us seven, eight, ten artists that they think that we need to do that. And we can look at them and decide whether or not we have a place for them and we want to acquire that art. From there, we then have to have City Council buy into it as well and say, yeah, we want you to do this.
Well, we don't have a wall space, number one.
But, but I'm just saying that, please, anybody can bring forward any artists they think that we need to put on public land.
If people can bring up anything, if they want to sell us lockers to put in the parks.
We have that.
Done that before.
Yeah, we had that brought forward. Yep. Okay, so please, please, the public that's listening, the public.
Yeah, I don't think.
Bring us art. Bring us art. I mean, that's, to me, that's a great thing.
I have not created any support on the third item, so I've only heard support on the second item.
Well, no, I'm saying on the third item, if, if granted what Manny said, if it's something that would just replace what they would have to do, but we'd still see it all. I don't, whatever comes in front of my face, as long as it's what it's supposed to, then I don't care who's doing it. So if Art Los Altos wants to do it, or Manny wants to do it, or Casey wants to do it, I really don't care. Whoever's life is made easier, if they like it more, then have them do it. If he likes it less, then don't have them do it.
Staff is still gonna have to go through it.
Yeah, I know, but you can.
Right? You're still gonna have to look at it. You're still gonna have to do the work.
It's not gonna have to tally everything and then.
Well, I'm still not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
Then we need an ad hoc subcommittee, whatever we're called.
We still have one more agenda item too. Hold on, three for, are not the same thing? Uh, yes.
So now the, the next item is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, staff will go ahead if, if we're ready.
We have the call for art, our team.
Okay, I'll keep this as simple as possible. Um, the staff now has, the, the, the call for art for the steps at the council chambers has closed. We have eleven submissions.
Three.
So all I'm asking is how has, and I'm not saying how in the past, because we can change them. How does this commission feel that process needs to take place now? Do, do we bring all eleven here and let everybody look at all eleven because they're, they're just, they're just qualifications? Remember, you're not gonna see a whole lot of art. There's samples in there, but it's not necessarily what they're proposing is gonna be there. And it's their qualification. You, does the whole commission want to look at, or do you want to create an ad hoc committee? It's as simple as that.
Well, we go in. Yeah, we've all had exposure to it, all the visibility. And we talk about each item and why we like it, why we just like it, what we think would be fitting.
I mean, my opinion is in the grand scheme of things, an ad hoc committee would be fine, but I think in the spirit of continuing to try to join this commission into one entity, I always should see it. That is my.
So the, the park people can understand what we do. So you don't, so it's not in the dark. Well, park, I think it's a good learning experience.
Yeah, yeah. So in this case, at least for this case, we don't want to establish an ad hoc. We run the whole commission.
And they thought, based on the situation too, because there is, I mean, I got eleven in the lot, but there's only eleven. If there was sixty-seven. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, and, but, because there is more work and then just saying, yes, no, you've got to review all eleven.
It's the responses.
They're not, they're not sample designs or anything.
They're not exactly what's going up on the, on the stairs.
And did they tell you what medium and all that stuff?
We use, we use the. Put up there. So we'll get as much information for which artist, bring the package here and uh, we'll review it here as an agenda.
Do they all have visuals or some just descriptions?
I think, I think Jamie said some had samples.
But so there's visuals for every single one, but it might not be exact because I wouldn't present something that doesn't have visuals necessarily.
Okay, well, I'll see.
I don't think we've ever done that.
They have past works, okay?
Jamie told me that, because Jamie is the expert in our system.
Yeah.
Um, so she told me that they have samples, but most of it is the wording of, these are my qualifications, this is what I've done in the past.
Good.
Blah, blah, blah.
Oh, yeah, but we look at past art.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's awesome.
When the agenda comes out, the agenda packet comes out before whatever meeting we look at that. Will the artists be listed or will they not? Because then we could be looking at website.
Yeah, I don't know how we're gonna, how we would do that.
I don't think we've ever had that before.
No.
If they didn't have samples.
You'll probably see this exactly.
We have the artists, but not all the details.
No, there's no way I'm gonna put all the details. Eleven packets.
But even if we had the artist's name, if they have website.
Is that what you want now?
No, I'm just.
Yeah, we, we always have the artist's name.
We have the artist's name.
Yeah.
In the agenda packet.
That's a public item.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Advertising to them.
Sure. I'll do it. All right, we have enough information to move forward. Thank you. Oh, what's the last thing?
All right.
Are we done with that? Yeah, I hope we have done with that. We're ready to move on. Um, are there any informational items, staff? Director Hernandez?
No.
No informational items. Oh, I noticed the future uh agenda item list is not here. Can you just?
It is there.
It is there, it's on the agenda.
Well, it's not on her computer.
What's on the agenda?
Underneath informational items.
Right here.
Commission subcommittees and then it has.
Why is it? It's not on, it's not on her.
No.
Computer. It's not on the, the one at the, at the city.
There's a, there's a um HTML version and then there's a PDF version. And so maybe doesn't.
It's not on the HTML version, so let me go.
Can we add a version?
It's fine, uh, it's fine, just go ahead.
Okay, there it is. It's not, it's not on the HTML version.
There you go.
All right, so um, anybody wanna, are there any, there are none from staff, no informational items, so now we're moving to, we don't have any ad hoc. We have to remove subcommittee and change them to ad hoc committees, but we don't have one. Um, does any commissioner have uh any report they'd like to make? Or statement of anything that they know?
We have the Easter egg. Um, we have the.
Oh, I need cheese after all that.
Egg hunt's coming up, man.
Please.
Please.
The spring, the spring.
Please.
Eggs. Hunt, yeah, that's so, but, but that's all that. Is that, I know, I, I'm sorry.
I'm guessing it's around Easter.
Yeah. Informational item, isn't it?
Do you have that date?
And we didn't do anything about.
Uh, what's the date? Next weekend, not this weekend.
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth, yeah.
Saturday, the thirtieth.
It's in the springtime.
Okay, okay. And so it's the spring, is the spring egg hunt? Sorry about that. Yeah, I just want to make sure that that was, and are, do you think they need volunteers? You don't need volunteers from?
Uh, yeah, if you would like to volunteer, they, we are looking for staff and volunteers right now. So please contact the Parks and Recreation Department, specifically um, ask for Bridget.
Bridget?
She's gonna be right here. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, now the future agenda items, uh.
Is there any additions to it?
Is it art tours?
Art tour.
Can I, as a staff, can I ask what the difference is between art tours and the brochure?
See, that's what, when you said that the brochure is on the future agenda items.
We need to update the, we need to update the works. So the, and then we need to update the wording. So let me, if I can, if I may slay the ground for, for everybody, um, because this was something I was focused on. Um, at the February twentieth meeting, we had the following future agenda items requested. Redwood Grove Pathway, Museum of Tree Replacement, Bike Wheel Walk Art Tours, Stock Car Plans, Art Brochure, List of Artwork and Assets and Loans. And the reason we need that information is because we can't update the art brochure without the list of artwork and assets.
So you're saying the current list is erroneous?
Some things, what current list? What are you looking?
The current one says Redwood Grove Pathway, Art Tours.
Yes, it sounds like something got cut off somewhere.
Park and Lou, um, Art Fund Presentation.
Artwork and assets. And brochure fell off.
Yeah.
So I'll say. There's one other item, the status on the update on art repairs.
Yeah, that's not on here either.
Man, who messed that up, Casey?
It was.
I'm so glad you're here, y'all. It's so great to see you. I think this is important because we, we, I feel like we're not getting stuff done. So, um, so.
We're not.
No, the art brochure, we were talking about the art brochure in October. I went and I checked the, the minutes and I looked at the transcript. We were talking about it then, about the process for how we were gonna update it. And we're still talking about it and it's now March. Um, we also need, we need an update on the Midnight Stomp Series. That, those are the, the chickens that are outside Safeway. We, we need to know where, was the purchase completed? That's, yeah, I forgot about that.
So that's, that's. Is that gonna be part of the assets though, or no?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, so artwork and assets.
Hey, so, yeah. Other suggestions?
Can I, can I put, can I commit to working, because I, we meet in two weeks to set the next agenda? I think we should just have an item on the agenda, which is catch up on everything that we're behind on in arts.
I don't think that works because we talked about that at the February twentieth meeting and we talked about the process for how agenda items get on the agenda and it didn't work. And so that's why I want to, I want to be very specific on the record about what we need.
What's the process to get agenda items on?
Yeah, the two weeks before a meeting, Manny and I get together, we look at the list and we also look at whatever's coming up in operations and we create an agenda that we can think we can kill in two hours.
Let me review one more time. There's three ways to get things on the agenda. That is, this commission can say that right now, at the next meeting, we want X to be on the, on the agenda. That's one. Second way is the commissioner and I work together to get things on the agenda. That's two. In our regular meeting. The third way is staff initiates, the council initiates, the city hall initiates, says, this needs to be on the agenda. That's the third.
Right. From my perspective, what we have asked for in the future agenda items for another meeting has not made it into the actual agenda. And that's what I want to articulate here, just so that Manny has it. And I can send you both a list if you want, but
Please.
the Midnight Stomp Series, that's uh, an asset, but we need to know what, was it purchased? Sculptures to be installed. There are a bunch of sculptures that were approved in twenty twenty-three. And I don't think we know which ones are still waiting to be installed in twenty twenty-four.
That list I know I gave early on though. I don't even think we're a complete commission. I did provide that list. Yeah, I'll provide it again. That's fine. That's not that hard. I've got it in my file. I'll provide that.
Fantastic. Um, and then.
I know recall.
Sculptures that have been repaired and which ones are still out. Okay, so.
So, I don't recall that. But, but then also we needed to know the status of refurbishing musical gamble and imagine that.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
So I, I, we don't know what the status is.
I mean, okay, so Stomp Series.
Send an email, I'll send.
Send me an email, because there's things on there I've never heard before. So I, I don't know where to find that.
I'll, if it's, if this works for everybody, I'll send it to Manny and Casey and Janine, and then ask that you forward it to everybody, so that everybody can see it.
We want it as an agenda item?
Yes.
Next month?
Absolutely.
That's a no.
Thank you very much.
It, it was done when former uh, Chair Waldman was on. He gave the update when she was still hard.
So we're also gonna put the Juneteenth on there, because that's a time-bound thing.
Yeah, Juneteenth.
What is Grant Park Movement of Art?
Oh, yeah, that'll be on there next week too, or next month too. Okay, um, just to give you some quick record, we are doing upgrades at the Grant Park uh, facilities out there on the electrical, so we can add heating, ventilating, and air conditioning out there, um, as well as other amenities in those buildings. It includes uh, an actual additional service from PG&E, and the service has to go pretty much on that whole corner of Grant Park. Is that a dog? It's on the front corner of. That turtle needs to be relocated, so the next report that you'll see next month is, any suggestions on where to put it? So when we send that out.
It's not, the footprint's not that big, that's the goodness.
You should go look at Grant Park.
It's on, it's on the corner of.
And I'll send, I'll send, I'll send the map too, so when we come to the meeting, if you've been out there, you've seen the agenda items, you've been out there, now you can look, we'll look at the map and see if we can pick. Depends on where to go. Can't move the cement pad. If we need a cement pad, wherever we decide to put it, we'll just.
I assume you told Matt Duffy that we did not pass the.
Oh, yes, we, somebody actually reached out to him ahead of time.
Yes, I want to thank you, and I want to thank Casey, and I want to thank Director Hernandez for keeping this meeting agenda short. So even though we didn't have everything on it, I appreciate that.
I adjourned the meeting, thank you.